That's all I have.
Great.
Thanks, Toro. Good job. Next, we have our municipal clerk, Lisa Hand. Do you have anything for us?
I just want to remind everybody that April 7th will be our opening firehouse. And this year, Dr. Brand is offered to put on at 1:30 at the Venter Community Building. For anybody who's interested in coming, she's going to be there to talk about food labels, basic nutrition needs for your pets, so it's something different to the Paul for produce. So we're going to try that. That'll actually be after the clinic. The clinic will be from 10 to 12. And then at the Venter Community Building at 1:30, she'll be there to close the presentation.
As we all know, this is one of my pet peeves because I know when we went door to door in 2016, there were thousands, no pun intended, sorry. Just, it's great because I love dogs. I have two myself, but there's thousands of dogs. Trust me, there's thousands in Venter. Most homeowners don't have one, they have two, some have three. So Lisa, let me ask you, with that many dogs living in Venter, how many dogs have been licensed to comply with the city ordinance thus far this year?
Two hundred and twenty.
Two hundred and twenty.
And we actually, this year, tried something different. I actually printed out everybody who had not renewed their license. And we had run, we physically called, got like 200 people to, as a courtesy call, just to, and it didn't happen. We got some, but we're still, last year we had like 467, I think. So we're like half as of right now.
The importance of a dog being licensed, I'm sure everybody knows, the common sense important factor is that they are vaccinated. They have their rabies vaccination. So it really disturbs me to think that we have thousands of dogs living in Venter that aren't licensed. Because that tells, then to me, the question in my mind is, are they free of rabies? You know, the other thing is, I mean, it's funny because if you ever watched the animal cops of Houston, or New York, or Arizona, I guess people don't realize that when you do not care for your pet, and if you do not get the medical, the proper medical treatment, that's considered neglect of an animal. So, I mean, besides feeding them and taking them for walks, as the human of the relationship, you, you're responsible to make sure they have proper medical care. And vaccinations are important. So I don't know how we can conquer that, and that's really not the biggest problem in Venter that we have, but before I get out of office, trust me, there will be a dog census in Venter.
That's one price for all the dogs, Lisa? Does that count by tonnage?
No, one price.
One price, just to make sure.
Ten thirds.
Yeah, ten thirds. Neutered or unneutered, correct, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. Our fire chief is not here, Chief Cahill, but Commissioner Kriebel, who is the Commissioner of Public Safety, will report on the fire department.
Thank you. Cahill had a conflict today, she's unavailable, but we discussed his report earlier today and I'll share with you. In the, in this last month, we had a total of 209 responses in the month of February. Of those, 26 responses were fire alarms, 66 were emergency services, which range anywhere from the proverbial cat in the tree to a vehicle accident. One of those responses was Atlantic City, was mutual aid with Atlantic City, which is an initiative that he has been very proactive about. 117 were EMS ambulance responses. One response was at Atlantic City Mutual Aid. And eight where there, we had two ambulances were needed going in different directions, where two EMS calls were called at the same time. Another good example where mutual aid was very valuable. The largest example of that was on March 2nd, we had a three alarm fire on 18 South Rossborough The mutual aid at that fire scene was Margate Fire Department, Longport Fire Department working with the fire at the same time, Atlantic City Fire Department, Pleasantville EMS, and Brigantine, I'm sorry, those were in the mutual aid department. But at that, at that scene was Longport and Margate and Atlantic City. We also had our lieutenant, who is David Funk, our lieutenant of the beach patrol, who was a part of the Margate firefighters, had sustained some injuries. He is back to work and in good, in good condition. So, back to the mutual aid. That plan did work as designed and is part of our, our agenda today. And then the rest of his, and moving on to the rest of his report, new personal protection gear has been ordered for 30 members to replace out of date, non-compliant personal safety gear. The price for that replacement gear came in $25,000 under budget and included additional equipment that was, including a three-season rain uniform that he was able to group into that bid. Delivery is expected in early April. The Venter City Fire Department is in the process of bidding out a replacement SUV for a 15-year-old SUV. And an engine that is from 1987 will be taken out of service. That process is ongoing as we look for bids for replacement vehicles. It will likely be, it is a functioning vehicle, it is just from 1987. It has an, it has an unenclosed cab. It's, it's ready to be turned into a gov.org type of, to pick up some of the value of it for the city. We have four members starting a fire inspection school that are due to finish in May, so that we'll have more of a complement for fire inspectors on shift at every, at all times, which is the goal. All, at this point, all, something new for the Venter City Fire Department, 10 of our officers, all of our officers have completed the state of New Jersey Fire Officer One Certification Program. So we're the only department in the, in New Jersey that has 100%. All of our officers are trained to that level. It helps as they move up the ranks, and it's a high level of training for those individuals. We also have 100% EMT now, which was never really the case. We were always at 80 or 90%. Now, every single firefighter is an EMT. Communication and code red issue was solved.
Perfect storm.
We had a perfect storm of, where it was tested to the max at that, at that three alarm fire on Rossborough Avenue, and that has been solved through the Fire Department, the police department. So, that's all I have. I'll turn it over to Chief Biagi.
All right.
I will just mention that Chief, there'll be a discussion about moving into the ice cream issue. If it's, your discuss, do your decision. But it is at the last item of the discussion items, I'm just looking at the agenda now. And that would lead us right into public comment, if there are folks here for public comment, and we decide to hold it for that.
That's going to be whatever you want.
You want me to hold my tongue for a little while?
So you can give your, your department.
My department's great. And this is my meeting. We're out there patrolling like we always do. We'll be hiring some special class ones. So if anybody knows anybody that wants to, you know, get a little experience before becoming a police officer, we have probably eight positions opening up for class one. We're also going to be hiring class two to cover our court coming up, that'll try to be three officers. And the other stuff is just business as usual, no issues.
Are we getting any of the class twos back from last year?
Nope.
No?
No, we lose them. We lost them. A lot of them, we actually hired, so. We hired in-house, they're great, and one of them went to summer's point. And the rest are cops now.
Great.
That's the, that's the way the program should work, right?
That's exactly the way it should work.
I want to just offer one. We did get a letter from Rosemary McMurray, who had a family member on, at home, that made a really nice letter on behalf of her family. And you, Chief, that was really one of the things that you do every day, is course of action, you check out houses when people call. She was very appreciative of the way that you handled it and your officers handled it, so.
Okay. All right. So we're going to proceed. Like I said earlier, this is our workshop portion, so we will go through all the items that we will be discussing and voting, actually not discussing, we will discuss anything we feel the need to discuss at this time, and then we take a break for about five minutes, and then we have our official commission meeting where we vote. So everything that we're going to talk about, and I know people have been here a while, so I'll go as fast as I can, we will be voting on. Okay? So, where am I? We have a presentation from our auditor, which, budget, Leon?
No, the first one's on capital.
The capital, so our auditor would do a capital presentation, then we will-
It's a repeat from October.
From when we did October, when we had, then we will be, we will have a public hearing on our budget, and that is when we open it up for the public, and you can ask any questions about only that, the budget. The next is, the next two actually are ordinances that our code enforcer discussed when he got up, so I don't think we need to go into that again. We will be introducing ordinance on the things that Jimmy mentioned.
I have one question on that. That ordinance 007 mentions bed and breakfast. Is there something different that-
That's in that whole zone.
That's in that whole zone.
It's in that zone. While we're doing, you don't even change, you don't condole it, or add it to the section on the ordinance.
Okay.
If anyone wants authority in there, is there-
Oh, so it's already in there, so it's repeated, that's it. Correct.
Good?
Yep.
Okay. The next item is we will have a public hearing and the adoption of an ordinance on a private property that the city owns, correct? That's non-buildable. So we will have a public hearing if anybody wants to speak on that, and then we will vote. The next, we'll have a public hearing on our salary ordinance. This is, this is specific to the person that is replacing Dave Smith. We have to change the title from classified to unclassified because he is coming on not only as a superintendent of public works, but he's coming on also as the engineer. So the title is not a civil service title. There will be a public hearing on that if anyone has any questions. Then we have a long list of resolutions by consent. The first one being a refund for the community building. The second one is an emergency repair on Dudley Avenue.
Silver line break.
Silver line break. The next resolution, actually the next two, I think, yes, the next two are, just what Commissioner Kriebel mentioned, are mutual aid agreements, one with the, with the city Margate and one with the city of Atlantic City. Although mutual aid may have occurred in the past, the legal way is the resolution should be done in all municipalities, so it is documented. The next is a res-
It also allows if there is a situation, mutual aid, and there are some reimbursements because of damaged vehicles, we are also in line for those. So it's a good, it's good. Let's go to Ms.
Thank you. The next is a, actually, we have one, two, three, four, five, we have five resolutions by consent, which are tax overpayments, where we reimburse someone that overpaid, correct, Margaret?
Correct.
Six?
Yep.
Okay. The next resolution is, the city of Venter, we are authorizing an application for recycling tonnage grant. How much is that going to be, Mariana? Do you know the grand amount?
I don't know if we know it yet.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
We're just making applications.
Just making applications, okay. The next resolution is, the city will authorize a no parking area for a block party, which is going to be sponsored by the Venter Business Association, which is a new organization of businesses in Venter. And the next one, resolution, is part of that block party event. Our next resolution is for the holiday party to close our roads. Holiday parade, sorry, holiday parade this year, we will have a rain date, thank you to Shelley who works so hard. We will have an original date and a rain date or snow date next year. The next one is the no parking for the holiday parade. The next resolution by consent is for the Atlantic City Marathon. The next is for April Fool's Half Marathon. The next resolution is for the Kenny Whelan Memorial Scholarship Run. The reason all of these are on here, just to let everyone in the public know, is, I'm not sure how things were done before we were here, but we now have a special event committee that they, they, they take applications, everything's reviewed, approved, signed off, and a resolution needs to be done for these special events to take place in Venter. So that's why, and we, instead of doing a piecemeal one at a time, that's why you see that we have the events that we're going to actually have to approve from now until the end of the year, correct, Chief?
Yep.
That's it. The next is authorizing the use of competitive contracting for the procurement of bike share program. The next one is a closing out-
Question, maybe?
Sure.
Is that, so that's the GPS bike-
That is, you are allowing us to go out for a competitive contract, like a bid, but it's sort of like a hybrid for the bike rentals.
So people will be able to pick up a bike and leave it, pick it up at one location, leave it at another throughout the city?
For a company to do that.
We've been approached by some.
We've been approached, and under the local public contracts law, we have to put it out for competitive contract.
Okay. The next is closing out of an escrow account, and that's when people do improvements on their homes. Our next resolution is executing an agreement with United States Army Corps of Engineers. What is that specific to?
I think that's the bulkets.
The bulkets?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, what number is that?
That is the year.
That's the feasibility study for-
For the bulkets.
From Jackson to Surrey.
Right, the back.
Surrey.
That's to participate with them in a study to see what the cost for the bulkets and what benefit the bulkets have in that area.
The federal funds?
The federal fund, that's our matching, $300,000 is our matching. We put that in our capital pool.
Right, right.
$300,000 to match for the-
The 20-hour study.
Right.
30%.
Right.
Okay. It's an estimate.
I'm sorry?
It's an estimate.
Estimate.
Yeah.
Okay. The next resolution is authorizing a request for proposals for energy savings improvement program. Is this with Jim Rotolo?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll do all our public buildings and do analysis and come back and tell us how we can save energy dollars.
And this allows us to do it with the city of Margate, the Margate Board of Ed, and have the Atlantic County Improvement Authority manage it if we so desire.
Yep.
Great.
It's a good program that they do, they're used to that a lot. We were kind of small, if you remember what Jimmy explained to us. We were kind of too small to be done on our own, so we partnered up with Margate so we can do more.
Because in theory, the savings from the energy should pay for the costs to implement the changes that gives you the savings.
Exactly.
Return on your investment. The next one is executing an agreement with FEMA for fire prevention and safety grant. Do we know how much that is, Toro?
No.
No? Okay.
It's the application.
It's just the application, okay. The next one is to execute a grant agreement with USDA for community facilities direct loan and grant program.
Okay, here we are looking to do possibly a grant and loan with the USDA to help fund firehouses too.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. The loan is about 3.5%, and you know, at some point, Toro and our advisors will have to look and see if that's something we should do, but it also is in part grant. Under the USDA for firehouses, your population is 20,000 or less. For anything else, it's 10,000. So, because it's a firehouse, we qualify.
Good.
Our population is just over 10,000, and we would not have qualified otherwise.
Good. That's great. That's good news. That'd be wonderful. Okay, the next is a resolution. Tim, this is-
Pre-cha, right. Mr. Manning, did you have to explain that?
Yes, he did, yes, okay.
At the previous meeting, it's simply a tweak in the language to see if the plaintiff in that case would be any more successful when applying for disability benefits.
Okay. Then we will have the approval of our bills and payrolls.
Mayor, can I stop you for a second?
Yes, you can.
Hate to be a party pooper, but C and D are going to have to be renewed, Resolution 88 and 89, they have to be ordinances.
88, oh, the mutual aid?
The mutual aid has to be done by ordinance.
So they need to be pulled out?
Pulled out, and Lisa, just list them on the next agenda. Don't need to list them for discussion, just introduction as ordinances.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's because we're having two means and one helps us.
Amazing. So, we're going to have workshop discussion items. We're going to hold this until after, and we'll deal with the public portion.
Do you want to do a background? Do you need a background?
No, I'm good. Okay, done? Okay. I'm just going to move things around for the convenience of the people in, that came out tonight. Technically, we could wait till I go through the entire agenda and vote on things, but we're going to just move things around a little bit. We do have Chief Biagi, who will open up before we open it up to the public. He has a few things that he would like to say, so I'm going to turn it over to Chief Biagi.
First, which are representatives from the ice cream vendors that are veterans? Everybody turn and acknowledge them for their service. Thank you very much. Okay, that's the nice part. With that said, what occurred over the last year is not compatible with the history of the veterans that served on our beach and that did their vetting. So let's do a little backtracking on what caused all of this. But first, I want to congratulate whoever started this whole campaign online, which turned us into a battle where one wasn't needed. It was not needed. This has always been done in Venter by a simple phone call. Nothing changed. To say I'm embarrassed or hurt by what happened and the words that were said online to people, I almost go as far as saying it was bullying. And I'm not going to say by you guys, because some of you aren't responsible, and I'm going to get to that later, but what happened online was a travesty. That should have never happened. Making people feel like they were patriotic, and making people feel like they were disgusted and Venter didn't like vets. I mean, it was so bad, I mean, even Jane Fonda called and said she supported you guys. This was amazing. You know what I'm saying? I mean, that's how ridiculous this got. 1,500 signatures, and you know, I'm always at every memorial day and every veteran day, and I'm there with the 10 or 15 people, like the mayor said, and we hold hands and we bless you guys, and we get emotional, and we're emotional about this. And you guys are always talking about having each other's backs, and that's what caused this. That key word is having each other's backs. You guys didn't have your own backs. Last summer, this whole thing was created when every Monday, Port Lisa was getting phone calls from the public, who of course wouldn't come out and say it because they were afraid of getting, being beat up online for even thinking of this, but there was an issue last summer, and you guys knew it. Now, you're all quiet now, and I love you, you guys know that. You call me, I'm there for you, and I love you, I hug you, but the behavior was not cool. And it wasn't all of you, but you know who it was. And you talk about, you want us to have your backs, you didn't have your own backs. And that's what created this problem. Ordinances are set forth for a reason. She should have not, never gotten a phone call. And most of these phone calls were from citizens or from fellow ice cream vendors. How about that? I didn't read that online. Didn't read that. What I read online was, they hate vets, they're not supporting vets, this guy in the back, love this guy, just met him, he was going to have a thousand cycles come down and protest. I'm like, what? This is crazy. This is absolutely ridiculous that this happened. This was never, you guys created the problem. You guys created the discussion. Because I called you up, you know who I talked to this past summer. You know who we had problems with, and we tried to deal with it in a nice way. Some of you were breaking the ordinance, you knew it. We let you go a little bit. Some of the other guys that weren't liking it were letting us know, hey, this guy's doing this, this guy's doing this. We're arguing on the beach, vets arguing on the beach. Are you kidding me? Really? So, we're not the bad guys here. They're not the bad guys. So this discussion was brought up with myself and Commissioner Kriebel, and this guy's patriotic. We all are. Everybody is here, you know that. And he says, you know what? Maybe it's time to open up a discussion that's never been had. Most people, you guys, will take the hint. Uh-oh, I even told you. You guys are going to talk yourselves right out of this. Now, for you guys back there, is anything that I've said a lie or not truthful? No? Anybody? Tell me right to my face. I don't want to read about it on the internet. Tell me, I can take it, but I know I'm telling the truth. You are. Okay. So we can all admit that this problem was not brought on by Commissioner Kriebel. This was brought on by the actions of some of your members that created a problem. And you guys put a wonderful spin on this. This was amazing that, man, I'm so happy that people, oh my God, they're supporting the vets, but they're hating me, and they're hating him. That's wrong. That is wrong. Some of the citizens out there were bamboozled. Oh my God, these people I voted for, they hate vets. Come on. Are you kidding me? And some of you let that happen. Shame on you. Shame on you. That should have never happened. We love you, you know that. The behavior was not acceptable, and you guys need to change. We have an ordinance, some of you were not following it. And man, it kills me to chastise you like this, but I am going to defend the city, and I'm going to defend the ordinance that we wrote, that says you guys will have this, that's never changing. But I'm going to hold you to the ordinance. I'm going to hold you to it. So help me, you know what? This, this is done. You guys had each other's backs in the foxholes, and I read all about this, I love these stories, band of brothers, man, I love that stuff, acting. Down there, there is no territory. It's Venter Beach. You serve the public, that's your one job. These people out here, you guys, I used to run for you guys when I was, when I could run back then. I used to run for you guys. I used to do that. That was the job, that was a Venter thing. It was a rite of passage. We worked together, it was the coolest job. My little basket, ice cream runner, I was allowed on the boardwalk when nobody else was. It was cool. And you guys, everybody knew who you were. Man, take your tongue for a sleigh ride, Mr. Bloom, you guys with your packs, man, it was amazing. We know you're getting old. We changed the ordinance. We'll give you a push cart. Whatever you need, man, I love you guys. Whatever to make your job easier. If it's not the ordinance, you're not getting it. Are we all clear on that? So moving forward, my friends, my veterans, my fellow Americans, we are all going to sit down with Chief Biagi, and we're going to be schooled on the ordinance. Every single one of you is going to come into my office, you're going to sit down together as a group, we're going to hash this out, because we're not going to have any problems on the beach this summer. And, okay, I love this, so who gets that? I love you, man, up here. Anybody? Okay? You know how people want to hear this. Citizens of Venter, you guys rock for being here supporting them. We support them too, just so you know that. So, we're going to talk a little more, you guys are going to be able to speak, and everybody's going to say, we love the vets, we love them. Some of them are going to say, you know what? Yeah, we'd like to make a little more money, but you know what? Maybe this isn't the way to do it. He knows that. But you know what? The conversation was, was brought up because you guys were pushing us in a corner. Breathe, breathe, get it out, man, I feel good. It's like an exorcism. I feel so good getting all this out now. Man, this has been bothering me ever since I read the internet, I was like, oh my God, I'm scared. Are we all good now? Is everybody, does there any question? Anybody in the public want to ask me? And again, anything I said been a lie?
No.
No. That's it. Okay? Don't blame, man, blame yourselves. And I hate to say that. We all do it. We all slip. Breathe, breathe, get it out, man, I feel good, it's like an exorcism. I feel so good getting all this out now, man, this has been bothering me ever since I read the internet, I was like, oh my God, I'm scared. Are we all good now? Is everybody good, is there any question? Anybody in the public want to ask me? And again, anything I said been a lie?
No.
No, that's it. Okay? Don't blame them, blame yourselves. And I hate to say that. We all do it, we all slip. We all make errors in judgment. And that's where we got to this point. Let's move forward from this. We're going to sit down, we're going to get straight, we're never going to deal with this again unless you guys mess up again, but I can tell you, if some of you do slip, we're going to install any ordinance and I'm going to talk to Tim and then, we're going to have a little discipline. Everybody else does. You're going to be held to a standard that Vetner holds itself to. My officers, my firemen, everybody, city workers, you're going to be held to that, you represent us. You represent us overseas, you represent us here now, we love you. You're going to be held to that same standard that the military held you to. Not as bad, but I know you all agree with me, okay? So once we get through this night, let's put it all behind us. This was a bad point veterans history, man, it should have never happened. You guys call me for dumb things and for something major like this, you go online and signpetition.org, come on. You made a mountain out of a molehill. With that said, I'm done with this. If you guys got something to say, you know where my office is, okay? No more attacking each other, man, this is, Vetner's too small, we've got too much going on here, we love everybody here. So come on. That's it, thank you, very much.
Yeah, just, did Tim want to say something?
Yeah, he's a tough act to follow, for one, but I do have a few things to, just to wrap up, because I was, I wasn't the, the single voice here. First of all, I do want to thank everybody that came out and the veterans for their service. I, my grandfather served in World War II. I want to apologize for, for, for when a department head, any department head comes to me and says they have a problem, I'm going to, I'm going to look, I'm going to find out what the problem is and I'm going to help, I'm going to help them solve it. The worst thing that a department head can say when they come to me is, this is the way we've always done it. And we heard that, we heard that from the parking meters, excuse me, and because we dug in, we found, we found ways to perform, ways to change, we, in one year, we realized $48,000 more than the year before. We had department heads and the tennis courts say they had problems. And we, we looked into it, we found $7,000 in revenue that was being missed when we found $7,000 in waste. We looked into beach tag fees, we changed the behavior of the way the beach tags are looked into on the beach. And we found $11,000. We looked into, one of the first things that, when I got in office, months, Toro came and said, we had a problem, excuse me, the ambulance, the ambulance numbers are way down. So we dug in, we started calling, we started finding out, I literally used different phone numbers to find out why the ambulance guy wasn't answering phone calls and he answered. I said, you have a meeting in my office in three days, it's about why you aren't performing. He, he decided not to be our ambulance billing supplier anymore and in one year we, we found $83,000 in revenue with a new supplier. In one year, we found $166,000 to the town that needs revenue. And that was the way I approached this, it had nothing to do with veterans, it simply had to do with fixing something that's broken and this isn't the time to, this isn't the time that the city has obviously, and the people have obviously said that this isn't the time that they're willing to approach a subject like this, so I'm leaving it as a discussion item, I'm not going to push for it to be an ordinance, but I, and I think it's too polarizing an issue. The vendor taxpayers do deserve, have all of us, I know all of us do, looking out for the, the vendor's best interest and that's what this was about. That's all it is.
Just a couple of comments and I don't want to believe in this anymore. Commissioner Crevel did what we were elected to do, takes a situation and, and he went through it because I had the same numbers here, I was at $130,000, what we found, it's new revenue, it was $166, so that's $130,000. We went into each department and found ways to increase our revenues in this community. We've done that. This is what this was about, looked at ways to increase revenue for this community. There's no hatred of veterans here. Did anybody know where I sit on the beach? If you walk by the south end of here, see an American flag sitting there, Kevin knows exactly where I sit. That flag's been there because a friend of mine went to Afghanistan and Iraq, four tours. That planet is the first time he went and he comes and visits me every summer because the guy's still alive and I'm damn proud of that. He's a Marine, he's still in the Marines and that flag will fly not just for him, but for all of you guys. So the hurt, the vicious attacks that the chief referenced on Facebook are, it's bullying, there's nothing else. It was a mob mentality, they all just pile on, oh, let's bash them, we can bash them about this, let's do something about that. This social media craze is, is really just people sitting behind a keyboard and making strokes to feel like they're bigger people. That's all that is. It's a shame, it's how our society is going and that's a real, a real shame. From, from Tim's aspect, you can see how passionate he is about this. And, and he talked about this a year ago and, and, and we didn't support it. However, he came back to us and said, look, this is real money here, you have to look at it. So we did look at it because it's dollars. It's your tax dollars that we can save by doing something like this. It doesn't quite meet, it doesn't, it doesn't meet the, it doesn't go far enough for me. If, if we could restrict this, that only the veterans still selling on the beach and still make the money that they could, that they do now, then I would have been okay with it, but it's not. I got a phone call from, from some of the guys, said, look, we're going to get paid eight, nine bucks an hour, that's not worth it for them. So, and we get that, but please don't look at Commissioner Crevel any, any less, he was doing his job as an elected official in this community to look at things, look at better ways to bring dollars in and, and that's all this was, it's not an attack on anybody. So, you know, I, I feel bad for, for him because the attacks on, on, on social media is just unconscionable. Just, yeah, we did, but, yeah, we all did, I mean, you know, be called idiot on the radio and things like that and that's just ridiculous.
Accused of kickbacks.
Yeah, unbelievable lies and deceit that's going on out there, it's a shame. You want to hear, you want to hear what's going on in this community? Come to a meeting and talk to it. You see how lately honest we've been, I mean, how honest we are here, we're not hiding anything. The vet doing the ice cream doesn't make us any more money personally, this is something for the community that we were looking for, to see if there was a way to increase our revenue.
And this is the only way, by our form of government, that we can discuss things. We have to discuss it in an open public meeting. So that is why it was a discussion item. And if you were here at the beginning, you all heard what I had to say. So for people to say it should have never been brought up, then you're saying that we don't have the right of the First Amendment. Yes, we're going to take a little break because-
Tim, did you want to say something?
Is this a done deal, can we move on?
Well, people-
I just want to make sure that they're clear, we're changing nothing.
We're not changing anything, I guess with that, and we'll come back after a quick break if any of you would like to speak, it is your right, okay, your right to speak, but nothing is changing at this point.
So nothing's changed at this point?
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changing.
We're going to hold you to the ordinance.
We're going to hold you to the ordinance. So, we're going to, do we have a motion to make a five, take a five minute break?
Motion for a mandatory Friday break.
Second, any second motion?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five minute break.